Let's pray. I'm probably in heaven. We thank you for this beautiful place we live. And we thank you for life and all the many blessings that we've been given. And thank you for this great place that we live. And we're gonna give you credit for it and lift your name up in our presence. As we go on very many in order, we pray that we conduct ourselves in a way that's pretty pleasing to you. And anything that comes here tonight will be praised for it. And the proud, thankful, and asked. Amen.
The city is unknown now, Leonard Bowl, of the downtown road 208. That's what I'm here about. Been going on for better than four years, getting the road shifted in favor of my neighbor to the point of being a power hole, which has been documented in pictures, we saw single papers. And flooding my yard is costing so far over about $4,000 to replace all my buildings and everything. And it's still going on with his blessing and her blessing. When I say that, because I know each time my neighbor done something. And she called him, he goes out and said, well, what he done's okay. He filled in the ditch, he moved the road out into his driveway, out into the road. Literally roughly three to four feet. But they have shifted the road over toward my driveway, because the rain's coming down my side of the road. And it stops at my driveway where another neighbor told me that's what the engineers at the county road ended at. You say they're gonna investigate it. Is it a county road or is it not?
I have not heard.
Well, originally it wasn't. I do know that from a wife and her ex cousin. It's my neighbor's sister that's doing this stuff. And her deceased husband paid to have that cut, cleared, tractors put in, everything. They paid for the car races, for the water from that side of the road to come into his side, my bottom law's side, and then to our side. And that's where the water ran until he filled the ditch. Then he moved the property, shifted it. Uh, showing before my deeds were the county road terms, they don't turn. They never did that. I know. Well, I've never seen it. Now, supposedly back in the beginning of the sixties, there was a pumping truck. That's what I was told. Even my bottom law said it. He asked for that fire where they tried to burn him out. When he first started taking ownership of that property. But they wanted him out there, but they wanted to see the road dead. But it wasn't broken. It was just a dirt track. Then perhaps they paid, and one of the black got older, and he gave her back three acres. He hurled their ex cousin, built a house up. And that's what being destroyed that by the county, because the county owner did the road, what they've done to it. And now all the favors of the neighbor. Why I don't know. You told me it lived away. Well, I didn't know that. I'm not gonna say everything you told me about it. But y'all told me he had money. And that's the only thing that makes sense. Why you would wreck the law to let him have that much property in the middle of the road? And not do the ditch, which always told you you were supposed to do. And you acknowledge. And it's never been touched.
I did, I did find out some clarification as far as when the county took possession back in. I believe, and I talked about it back in, uh, did you say the seventies, lady? When was it? No, it was in the nineties. It was when the counties went in there. When they went, units, system, when they changed the system, that's when the county went and claimed roads. And whoever the commission was at that time, they went in and adopted those roads. That's when it became a county road.
What year was that?
Year of late.
Eighty and ninety? Ninety-nine. Because that's our retire, because of what the county wrote when I retired, ninety-four. Because not a county road, for the first time I saw a grader come down there, I told them, hey, you ain't gonna build it down here. Well, this is county road, as they're showing. He said, well, I'm happy that I'm through. I said, well, you can't brood. So why are you down there cutting this road up? But at that time, the guy actually did a great job. I thought that was great. Hey, they're gonna do it like that. Fantastic. Hey, they're gonna walk across the river down. But I had to get right away to the neighbor at the end, which was Dave Robinson at the time. Of course, he got killed, and his parents took it. And we had to give them right away to cut the fence open and make the road go down there. Which is straight in, towards the curve, which that didn't happen. But I mean, he did a good job. I didn't care. Yeah, he can have right away. My neighbor said, no, he can have it right away. Don't worry about it. I knew he was a good neighbor of the road. So they, they cut it off. Then when the other neighbor lives up on forty-nine hundred, bring cows in there. Nobody getting permission. Oh, no, you gotta do this. You got to grow out that. Obviously, it wasn't a county road ditch, but we had to give them permission again to open another up and put a gate in there. I said, well, what did county road do down there there? Well, now I don't know. It's not. Now we got a gate up there. And that, that path through the bowl top, there aren't no cows in there anymore, because they saved the damn out.
But it is not a county. It just, the county road just goes to the.
To my driveway, supposedly.
Just beyond, just beyond this driveway, ever, but we turned.
How did the county road stop at my driveway?
The county took possession to just that point, correct?
That's correct. February of nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Yes, when the first, this one was.
Then why did they cut that trench on my side, by my driveway, to make all the water go down my driveway? Why didn't they go on paths that little way where it might go down eight? They didn't do that. But never once have you ever told them, we're getting back there and do the job right. All this effort were cleaning the ditch down. That was it. Nothing else we had done that I know of it.
But please, man, do not, you know, I guess, I'm speaking to myself here. But to say that, uh, I haven't listened to your neighbor, I don't even know the job, and I've not even talked to him but one time.
You don't like him, right? You know why I'm a pill holder. He's a kid, bro.
One time. I've made him one time.
Well, I know you know. And I know you know why I'm a pill holder, because he worked for y'all.
But that long job does not work for us.
Not for me. That's why I figured we were gonna pull the county desertator off of it, because you've gone now. Because it's never a county road before that. Not once was it ever mentioned to be a county road, not one city, county ever checked it. We paid to have that for clarity every time. They did great, or we want to write it, why didn't we pay for it?
Well, for some reason, the county took possession of it and not in ninety-eight.
And then they quit taking care of it. They put up a little sign saying county road, you're away. And that's it. Other than shift road against my bottom law's side. Literally shifted the ditch over his side, all the way down, ditched our hole that go into my house. And they come on down and cut a trench where the large old neighbors could run down my driveway. And it is destroying our home. Now, I've already told the wife, I plan on moving out of his county because. But I cannot get rid of the house, because I promised your dad she would keep it till the day she died, if I'm alive. So we are gonna move out, so you won't have this problem no more, and you won't have to fix it. Because I know you don't want it, and that's fine. Because if I wanna do it, I already did a big deal. Because I know, you told me one time, you took before good people to do these roads. They are darn good people. I'll tell you something, these people, it wasn't greater for stuff, they know exactly what they're doing. Because he cut a perfect trench for him, my driveway. They cut, smashed my mailbox and on the sladdle with, with mackerel. So they know exactly what they're doing, but they never cleared the ditch. Thought they weren't told to. That's one thing I can assume. Because the ditch is still that. One time, you said another guy had to do it. But he did a pretty good job until my neighbor filled the ditch back up. Which he told him, and he come out and said it's okay. Until I felt I had a wrong choice. Tractor and water, I got pictures of it. Then also I had a wrong choice on my driveway. Told me not to visit anybody, he can run heavy equipment. He's right. I ran a tractor as young, we grew warm, we grew corn. But I can't run a mackerel. I wouldn't want to. Never had to be tired, too. I desire playing the ocean today. And that's my fault.
It sounds like it's issue between the neighbor and you.
No, it's not. If I come to, you gotta go to the last time I saw you. Call the, call the police when he does it again. Had I done that, I'd been arrested for false arrest, because he said it was okay. And you told me, you said.
Well, what he did, they went and looked at it and said it was fine.
Then they find somebody closed off a ditch. And that's exactly what he did. That's him going up to his driveway, which was the original ditch, has been closed off again. And if I recall, along him, had it arrested, he comes down and says it's okay, that's false arrest on my part. I used to be a cop, I know. I was military, nobody had to do it, so this kind of stuff. But this will be the last time I bother y'all. I promise you that.
Can, can anyone just get on the road and do work? Okay.
Can't you legally fix it? Now that it's his property? Supposedly that ditch is his property, because y'all have a trash. Not one. Other than smashing my mailbox, you did a good job of that. You missed the other four.
So the road going past your house is, is your, that's where the road ends, correct?
No, that's supposed to end in the beginning of my driveway, where they cut the trench to the water and run over there.
But what I'm saying is, you said you get people to come down, down the road there.
Yeah, they're further down.
Okay, so you give easements. You, you signed over an easement to somebody, or you just verbally give them permission?
I verbally gave them a right of way with eyes up and didn't see it that much. I don't have to do it.
So you never signed over or told?
I ain't signed anything, anyway, because it ain't mine.
Yeah. I, I give, I give right of ways before I'm probably at eye, but I had to do an easement. Where you still own it, still be responsible for the uptake. But you've given them an easement, so if I had a pocket behind you, I sure wouldn't spend no money unless I had an easement to probably I could get to.
No, that's the verbal one I go and let you go down there. Because as far as I knew, it was nothing more than old fallen track. And everybody's, they know you got a right of way. Why? I never knew it was a county road. My deeds don't think it's ever a county road. But my deeds go the curve. They don't curve me.
But if you give, and I guess that's, those people jumped a half, went down there and half a place. If you give an easement for them, then the county could maintain that road from your driveway down there to that past yours up to their property line, correct? If it was, if it was, if it was.
Well, it wouldn't be that.
Not, not without the county except in my case.
I don't think they want it down there anyway, honestly, because it, way it was, he cut a big trench there. And that's the reason, actually, I closed the camera, I take it out. Because the guy wasn't put a ditch in there like he had to do. And he kept covered it up.
Can I, Lee, can you get some plaques or take a look at it and bring back some work station and so we'll have something to look at?
Well, I don't think you find a time, because we go by that. And that, so it's no purpose.
Kevin, I mean, if it's a plaque, it tells you on what, then maybe we can work on some.
Well, I can go to the original. I've got the original. It ain't that way no more, because the neighbor here did.
But, but were the, were the county records shot that he owned from there on the ground?
No, I don't worry, but where they don't. See, my father means to create. He, he with, but my father, he, he doesn't like blood.
The guy he's talking about, it's his property here and property here.
Let's look at the engineer, they, they, and Miss Cobb, and we'll all sit down and take some work stations and see what we come up with. We, we're not gonna be able to do anything tonight.
Well, I know you, I don't expect anything to be done, very honestly. They've been doing this for over four years now. And all they were at to do originally was clean the ditch. Your ex lawyer or prior lawyer told him, yes, it's county, you need to do it. He'd never touch it.
But did, like, my understanding.
My, my.
We did get.
We, we went in there and cleaned the ditch out. The road, the drainage on the road not works as far as I'm concerned. Uh, once the, once it leaves the property, it, it doesn't. A lot of the water that he's talking about comes off of his yard. Uh, we can't, you know, we're, he's excluding all that. He's got a big slope to his yard. Most of that water drainage is coming down, hitting his driveway, and then for the paths, it's coming off of his own property. Uh, the ditch that he's talking about, saying that we cut it in there, there's not, he put a load there. There's no water coming off the road in that he put, that's really getting to that ditch. The, the road itself, there's no washes across it, there's no, as far as I'm concerned, all this.
Well, you've, you've been out there before. You seen that big black O T got at the end of his driveway? That was the property line. That O three and a four feet coming out, wooden. That ditch was open.
His driveway, his driveway does truly add into the road.
But he blocked, he blocked that side of the, that ditch, and he blocked the other side that he put in. He blocked that ditch too, and water can't go to it, because he was allowed to even into the driveway further out into the road.
Well, we all did it up on that side of the bus and had all that drink, and I don't think they did.
I mean, I can fix my side, and I'm going to. Y'all ain't all right, but I'm gonna fix it. Because the only thing I'm gonna do is bring your mortar, build it up again, so it don't run there, cutting on down past my driveway. County ain't gonna let that happen. It's gonna affect the water meter that's out there that ain't hooked up or nothing. But I'll cut the ditch all the way down to my neighbor's yard, because he got about a foot and a half ditch already cut for the water to run. I just gotta get rid of the crown, and then I gotta figure out how I'm gonna get across it.
Let's take a look at it. We got four bases we gotta take care of, and, and, and we'll talk about it in the next work session. How about that?
When is that? So I'll go first.
First major, James, you do that first.
First, first, you do nineteen, where?
First two, nineteen. Oh, I ain't know until I do that.
All right.
We've been there.
That's three. It's at three. Yeah, work session's three o'clock.
Oh, it's at three? Okay.
Comments on Tristil? Sheriff, anything?
I don't know if we have any soul for work, for the base of this. Well, I guess this is a. Uh, Ms. Oswald, from Veterans Affairs, is retiring at the end of this month. And, uh, this order, we need to acknowledge her, and she can't come in here.
She does.
She does.
In the next one.
Yes, she.
Anyway. I guess we can.
Took you there, flagged and a resolution for your service.
Yeah, something like that.
Yes, she was a part of the, of the town. For the time of that, it's January thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay. I was telling you this month, so, okay. We can deal with it next month. All right, uh. Consent agenda. Everybody signed off on consent agenda, right? Let's go.
How much commercial pass to consent agenda?
I second it.
All right, everybody, say it.
Aha.
And then this passed. New business. Order forty o'clock to the ARCA. What's your reason?
Okay.
All right, he gives, uh, a.
Okay, whereas the county commission has received American Rescue Plan Act ARCA funding. And whereas the county has been advised that Brooklyn Road projects are only acceptable if expenditures are above. And whereas Cleveland County Board of Haring has provided a list of priorities that satisfy the needs for Brooklyn Road and the county. And whereas all projects must be approved by the investing in Alabama's county's IAC program from the Association of County Commissions of Alabama ACCA. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Commission agrees to apply for approval from the IAC for projects under the six thousand and two thousand dollars.
How much motion does it accept, please?
I second it. All right, everybody, say it.
Aha.
And. All right, uh. Can you finish this? I agree, I stand. How would you?
Whereas the commission has been presented the tax study fund options for climbing associates. And whereas the commission has thoroughly reviewed and considered the options presented. And whereas the commission has determined that the main part paying increases to the tax study funds. And whereas the commission has determined that Plan C is currently the only legal option. And whereas due to budgetary insurance, the commission directs that each department's current budget be used to cover the balance. The first year cost of Plan C ending in January of twenty twenty-two. And each department will be required to raise their budgets at the same level in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And whereas the department heads will each be required to sign an agreement regarding said requirements. And whereas the salary increase will take effect within the pay period from January nineteenth to January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two to the payday of February second, twenty twenty-two, which is the first full pay period of January of twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, be it resolved that Cleveland County Commission hereby chooses to proceed the Plan C of the best three sets of above.
Ask for motion.
I would like to make a motion that we title this to January. Uh, I've been dealing with Sonny Bradshaw and, uh, and ACCA on our COVID money. I mean, our chairs, that money. I would like the commission to, I've tried, I've tried to get it set up all week. And hopefully we can do it Thursday. I don't mind entertaining the next Thursday, so we can meet with this lady to take, uh, the information that I have. I, you know, I think Miss Cobb just got it today. Uh, they just got it today, and it would be, uh, uh, you wanna, you wanna say anything about it? But anyway, it comes from our COVID money. We're trying to figure out how to use the COVID money. For if we pay, we put in an amount. And for, uh, until twenty twenty-five, we can take the money out of the COVID that we got now. And, cause that, you know, and some of the comments were, you know, we're spending on using that money for something else. But, but we could really use our general fund money, which would take some of the, the strain off of how we could use that money for like, we're gonna do work at the jail or whatever, with that, with the money that we have in the general fund. Because there's a lot of hoops we gotta, uh, jump through to make that happen. So, uh, I was just trying, you know, and I, and I stayed in the home yesterday. And, and I didn't really know that the program existed until yesterday. Uh, and I stayed on the phone with Sonny last night, going over for it, and we, I know Lisa's got a column, I got a column to Kelly.
Kelly.
Yeah, to, uh, to help us look at this. But what, you know, I've got, in my mind, I wanna, I really want something to happen for our employees. But if we can figure out, use a good bit of this COVID money, and we can, we've got it, and we're looking at options to use this. Uh, you know, I would like for the commission to give us enough time if we want to, uh, come back, when, you know, next week. And, uh, after we have time to meet with her. But to me, it would be beneficial. Then what would happen, whatever amount that we put on this COVID money, it will pay until twenty twenty-five. So the raises that we would have, it come out of COVID money, and then the raises would be interactive, would then take place going towards out of general fund or out of our budget, would just be included. So whatever raise that we get through the COVID, we make this work until twenty twenty-five. Then, uh, then, uh, then at that point, and this is the way the COVID's set up, there's a couple of drawbacks. The elected officials won't get a raise. Only one that will get raises, from my understanding is, is county employees. So once we get, uh, to twenty twenty-five, then that money will come out of the general fund. And, uh, but I think it's an option, the commission, really they should get a clear understanding, if we can use some of this COVID money. Uh, I know we moved seven, looked at, put seven hundred thousand of it towards water lines and stuff.
And we still need, we still, you know, having trouble, like, for internet. We still need to be looking at internet also. Because of the, the, uh, Edgell, Edgell has some, but for the most, most guy has no internet.
We need to, it's spinning on the page, video. Okay.
How about those two, title it two, because we're asking some change in our figures to, to not.
I'm gonna listen up on this. We're, we're tabling, we're willing to table this, but we're not gonna discuss this in person. So do we just need to vote on this?
We just vote on the motion table and then.
Okay. But, but if we continue the meeting to discuss that, and you're not gonna be discussing this, you're gonna be discussing a totally new plan. Is that okay? I mean, you see what I'm saying? Like, if we need to close this out, and open up, oh, we do, that's what.
Let me ask, can I ask you this? If, if we cut, if we close this out table until January, I mean, I don't wanna wait that long. But, but if, let's just say, as of tonight, if we stay meeting with who I wanna have a conference call with, hopefully as soon as this lady calls us back to get a clear understanding, be able to use this money. Then I would like to, uh, go ahead and have a, advertised for the county commission to come back and discuss this plan before January.
So what you would do in that case is you would be tabling the main motion until the January meeting. But if you get information that would cause you to want to, I guess, it's sort of supersede that in the meantime. You could call a special call meeting for this fund package presentation.
Because this would save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And then when the time comes up to the motion, the table motion in January, if the issue has been addressed by these funds, then you just make a motion to remove it from the table.
Okay, then we can move on with our other one.
Correct.
Okay.
Or, or you can just vote it down if you've got to take care of this.
Okay.
Okay, but I think what you asked for was continued to this meeting. I don't gonna be able to do that since it's a new, pretty much a new.
I don't think we will. I don't, I don't need to have this. I didn't have this, and maybe yes for that.
Okay, we have first and second. Let's, let's put, who's in favor?
Uh.
I said, I don't know, so you did, so I don't need. I'm in bed, so I'm moving to sleep. Let's go.
Whereas Cleveland County will support state efforts and local resources to elevate the status of all public safety telecommunicators to first responders and may not, may not face similar effort on national level. And whereas public safety telecommunications officers play a critical role in public safety homeland security, emergency response, among, alongside police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators require specialized training and skills to gather vital information and make split second decisions to plan a mission or effective emergency response, event the worst of the situation. Provide situational awareness to other responders and/or provide life saving direction. And whereas public safety telecommunicators work in a uniquely stressful environment, communicating with people in great distress from fear or, or injury, and that environment can have an adverse emotional and physical impact. Acknowledging that PTSD and vicarious trauma are real issues in the nine-one-one telecommunication profession. And whereas public safety telecommunicators hold strong and gentle on providing selfless compassionate care to all during good times and bad. And whereas Cleveland County holds all these things to be true. Now therefore, be it resolved that Cleveland County Commission, that Cleveland County recognizes that public safety telecommunications officers are far more vulnerable and supports the national movement to reclassify telecommunications officers as first responders and accurately recognize the scope of the work they do. Additionally, the Cleveland County Commission supports nine-one-one says acts to provide, to properly classify the profession of nine-one-one public safety telecommunications.
All right, ask for motion.
My motion.
Second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Yeah, of course, correct.
And Jason, this is the one that you read out.
Correct. The original resolution basically said that we're going to change our telecommunicators. Uh, the way it's been rewritten is to support any efforts at the state legislatures by the law. That if the legislature intends to take this, Cleveland County supports that.
The only thing they support.
Just support, not take any action.
Correct. All right. I'll call it.
Okay. Well, who's in favor?
Uh.
What's your passes? New business, I don't need.
I just want to, uh, inhale, uh, this here, go back to the program that I'm looking at in our care's book. Uh, I just seem to table this or remove it.
Do you want to make a motion to table it?
Make a motion to table it till February, probably.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion period. So we're moving out to February? We're moving the, uh, I don't need to January.
Correct.
Uh, uh, the scope, the benefit.
I understand.
And, and.
No further.
There is, no report, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Yeah, old business, I don't know, I mean, just anybody, any time. Discussions, well, the basic, before they only pass out, or whatever.
Well, I, I want to, I mean, I'd like to make is that, uh, that I know that we've had a lot of discussions and conversations about increasing our employees' pay, and I was wanting, I was really eager to make something happen tonight. But I think, uh, you know, if they want to look at what I'm looking at, that it's just a no brainer for not to use that money because it's such a, a small line that we can use that money for, and you gotta jump for it. And once we meet with this lady. for, and you gotta jump through hoops, and once we make this lady come, uh, essentially get on the phone with her, then, you know, uh, but I guess the only thing I wanna say is, while we're talking, or we, what, do, do we just give Brian to go ahead and, and set up a special call meeting for next week?
Or whenever it needs to be called.
Whenever it needs to be called, once we get to talking with her here, I just think that's money we need to use, and then, and then even what we put on that note, uh, just talking, and if you can still add more money to that come September, also make sure that the increases that we have in our budget is gonna come to fruition for us to have that money to continue on, even as we was looking at that study, uh, because, uh, the study's about two hundred and one thousand dollars per year. And that's only, uh, just the pay, that's not all the other stuff that we have to make up, and then also, our insurance on single coverage this year went from five twenty-one to five third, five fifty-one, uh, that has gone up this year too, so.
The jobs, they don't even do that.
They don't have anything to do with it, it's more money coming out of the commission's pocket, right?
Yeah.
The thing is, it's the people's money, we were waiting to oversee the people's money, that's what, we, we have to look at our employees, but we also have to look at the taxpayers. This is your money, this is a lot of money just to make a quick decision. I think we need to really think about it and go through each, like, she had a few changes tonight.
Well, I think one of the biggest things is, is this right here, I think that, that once, once we listen to this, it's gonna be a no-brainer, uh, of what we can do for three years and then, uh, till twenty twenty-five, and then it starts coming out of the general fund, but then at that time, the elected officials will be included in it too. So this right here doesn't include the late, the elected officials within twenty twenty-five, because we'll have to start paying this out of the general fund, so for three years.
But, now, I said through a presentation, that didn't look very good presentation, but if you're gonna be a deal where everybody gets the same amount, I mean, if that's the problem, if that's the case, then it's hard to fix the problem.
What is this, we need to look at the limitations on it, just to be sure that, you know, we're not.
That's pretty much what I'm having to leave with, the lady is supposed to be telling us that it's gonna sign off on it.
We already know that there's a, a cap, uh, amount that someone could be paid.
But, but it's the same thing that many talk about, if I can get the bondets out this month, then nothing says we can't come back in September and add to what we've already added out of this. I mean, if, if even if we had a dollar per employee top and bottom, you know, that there's a two thousand and eighty dollar a year increase, not counting whatever else we have to pay out, and if you want a dollar fifty, what, thirty-one, something like that, whatever, uh, so those are numbers, I know, I, I, but I, but what I'm saying is, I know some jobs that I looked at on this study, I, you know, I know they're probably, you know, when you, when you, when you compare in Maine, to Calhoun County, and you compare in Maine, to Carroll County and all that, well, first of all, we don't have the services, all the income, Calhoun County takes in in a month, but we take in in a year, or probably in a week, to compare, uh, you know, what we can pay out, so I just don't, I just wanna make sure, like Ms. Scott said, I don't want them all into the short end of the boom, that I know, first of all, we've had a big increase in what our estimates was that we're gonna bring in, and that not comes to, to what we do. But I'm saying, is this right here, if this year will work out for us? It gives us a cushion between now and September. Uh, did you bring this? And, and it gives me a cushion to make sure that all this stuff is gonna come together, and, uh, you know, and I've had, uh, four employees call me, and I just discussed it just the way I discuss it, you know, what I'm thinking about, and, uh, and they were a little bit big, you know, when I mean, something, you know, that's a good bit of money, you know? I've had an officer, you know, this is my third term, and I, and the highest wage I've seen hanging out was a fifty cent on a raise. I think sometimes what happened in the past, when they would hand out raises, when I first come into office, you know, you can hand out a bunch of raises for the few that's already making a lot more money than other people, and then, but at the end of the day, those people, you know, they just get that little bump every, every quarter, but they, at the end of the, at the end of the year, they're still making sixteen dollars or fifteen dollars or whatever their higher rate is because they're topped out on their job. So if you, if everybody, uh, you know, those people that are down at the bottom of the list, uh, they're struggling, you know, just like, and then, and then, like, we're talking about a lot of people making a hundred thousand dollars, you know, on, on these pay studies, but it is a lot of money.
What was our total that we spent on, uh, moving to two, one, going to two, one, what was the total, was it two hundred? That, that we, that, you know, we spent, you know, when we moved to two, one, and two.
Twenty seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was, it was a large chunk, that it's gonna take us three years just to recruit that.
I understand.
I'm just saying, you know, people forget us about that.
The, the only thing I gotta say about it is, if you do the Plan C, it don't cost the commission anything, because we've already given that money to the department heads, and the department heads have agreed to use the money they have, and they're all okay with big money, so that really don't cost us anything either. Cause we're, we're just, we're just.
That, for the first point, there's.
What do you mean, you've got your own money to implement Plan C?
Do what?
Why not? You can get, what you have to do is you can come up with a dollar amount, because it's gotta be across the board evenly, you can't say, I'm gonna pay this one five thousand more per year, and I'm gonna pay this employee three hundred dollars more a year.
Does this bring the plan side up, that has to be equal across the board?
I think that's. There's a question, there's a question, I, again, we're speculating, but I think when we make with the lady, that's, that's what we gotta make.
Then just check on that, you know, if we could do that, that.
Oh, yeah, we have.
And that'd give us three years to adjust the county budget, for this, this pay, right?
But you do realize that if you do do that, the first year you're paying double, because the money's already there, the department heads have already agreed to it, so if you gonna let them keep that money, and then you gonna use ARPA money, then you're gonna be paying twice. You see what I'm saying?
But the increase hasn't been, hasn't been approved, the money's in the budget, it hasn't been approved, so they can't spend that money just because it's in the budget.
Oh, yeah, they can, we've already passed the budget, it's in their, it's in each department that is spending, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't seem like.
So it's all, so it's what you're saying, just we don't give raises for the year?
If the department heads agree on this plan, yes, we have.
It needs to be a line of change, I mean, like, if, if they're.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm, what I'm saying right now, I'm just telling you.
It's built into.
It's built into the budget, but the, but that part of the budget hasn't been approved.
Yes, it has, yeah, so like, see, they will be pulling money, not just out of payroll, they want to pull money from somewhere else.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
So all that money's gonna be approved, they can spend.
So, so all I'm saying is, is the fact.
Yeah.
You're saying that when we did the budget, we approved raises?
When we did the budget, we approved a dollar amount.
Right.
And there was, I think eighteen thousand dollars in there for the step raises, but see.
I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I'm sitting out and talking, I had to talk to all the.
But what I'm saying is, we don't have to do nothing, they already got their raises.
No, no.
It was. So I'm, so I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a little drive, and I'm gonna put it toward the raise, I'm gonna take a little asphalt, I'm gonna put it toward the raise, I'm gonna find, I'm gonna find that money in my budget to be able to, to do.
Yeah, but, but then, that, that's where I have a problem, because when you're taking asphalt, and you, you're taking stuff from the taxpayers, then I have a problem with that.
If that asphalt, that gravel is sitting on my yard, and I ain't got nobody to.
But I got, I got areas, I got areas where I, I've got zero money, and I've got areas that need to.
But the fact of it is, the thing, the thing with his budget, what you just said, the, I'll take, he's got his own money, so even, e- even whatever you flash right here, it's not coming from your general fund.
Right.
But let me say this again, that three years, if we pass what's in this book, and we can make it happen, he can take that gravel money and do whatever he wants to. I'm not, I'm just saying, I, I, when I was talking to him on the phone, I was saying a dollar amount, just trying to come up with a dollar, it can be a dollar fifty, it can be whatever you all decide, once you get through the meeting, but what I'm telling you is, that gravel you wanna buy, I'm looking for three years to take it out of this book, hand it to him, and then he go buy a bull brat, because all the raises we got is coming out of this book. I mean, that's a no-brainer to me, and I might be looking at it wrong, and I might say, I'm sorry, but I cannot step over this, a two hundred thousand dollars, or whatever we decide, take out of that two point five million, is that what it is? Huh? Two point eight million.
Two point eight million dollars, that we're trying to scramble around, trying to figure out how to do it, if I can use it to pay our employees, and I'm telling you, what I'm telling you is, your money, all this additional money that we're talking about, will come out of this book, not from, from that account that she has sitting over there, not from the gas tax money.
Right, and this, here's my concern.
Same way with Joyce's office, it won't come out of the taxpayers, from our schools, it won't come out from our sheriff, all the money that she sent her check out, all this increase will come out of that money that we got sitting down in the bank, I'll figure out how to spend.
Here's, here's my concern, and it's not, it's really not even a money-based concern, it's a, it's a structural and foundational concern. So, the pay study has set a bar, this, this operator here should be making this number right here, this lady in the clerk's office should be making this right here, to get everybody to that bar. If you go in there and you give everybody that dollar raise, the, the clerks that, the clerks are now gonna be making a hundred and ten percent of what we should be making, this operator's gonna be making eight percent of what he's supposed to be making. It's not, yeah, it's free money, I'm all for that, but to just throw a flat rate out there across it, you're.
I understand, I understand, and when we get closer to where we're going, and then.
You know, it's a little, at the end of this time, for three years, if you do another pay study, Plan C, you have a half million dollars, so you're not getting close. If you raise everybody, you're not getting close.
If I may, but I think, what I'm sure I was trying to say is, if this money is available, and it can be used in this fashion, and let's just go with the dollar argument across the board, that brings you that many dollars closer to having the Plan C paid for, and then you approve Plan C from the raise four that the dollar brings in, but if you do that, then some people might take, take that, because some people is not in that, is not gonna get a dollar in that pay study. I understand that, and, and they get nothing for Plan C that way.
Well, I think some of them gets, I think it's like nine hundred dollars, some people gets five thousand, some people gets this.
That's what's the beauty sense, that's what's the beauty sense.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, I think all of them need some money, but what I'm saying is, too, the study that was done for us, is, I know we're competing against these, these counties, but when I talked with Randolph County, you know, they changed their pay study, they used Clay County, Cleveland County, they, they added other counties involved, other than just the big high-dollar people that, uh, like Calhoun County. I'm just saying, this money here, we're trying to figure out, I'm just saying, that, you know, it's like, it's like, it's like I said, it's like I said, I don't think, you know, uh, I, I, I would like, I would like, I don't think we should have jobs starting at a ten dollars an hour, I think that, that.
What, I think it's, if, if we implement the Plan C, which is not gonna cost us nothing, because each department has, they got the money, then next year, you bring this up, and we give raises across the board, and everybody will always sit at ninety percent of what they should be making, then next year, if you do that dollar, it'll work out perfect.
Where everybody would actually make a hundred percent.
Yeah, then, then you would get to what this study says would be a hundred percent of, of prior salary for this area.
I think either, either I would go, you need to admit, have more knowledge about what this plan.
Absolutely.
Before you make a decision, or anything.
That's great, I think, how you're working.
I agree with that, but, um, I was like, the, the.
Oh, no, I'm, 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 I'm just trying to explain to people, you know, mostly our employees, that I'm not trying to get out of giving them more money, I'm just trying to figure out how to use this.
Well, if you're trying to do what, the tax, you're looking out for the taxpayers too.
Well, I'm looking out for my county employees, because I can do this right here, and, and the money comes rolling in, like, like Senator Bush, they said that we're gonna collect at the end of the year, uh, you know, this year's just a step in front of what, all the, I mean, you know, the money that we can add to the, to the place on the money that comes in.
But next, but next year, you're not gonna have this money, the department heads are not gonna be willing to make up the difference.
Well, then, we have to, that's one thing, we have to put our deals together again, figure out what we need to cut, to make it happen.
Well, let's, 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 let's speak with the lady, uh, we gotta call into her, and I'll call her again tomorrow, and the next day, until we get this done, Sonny says that she'll meet with us, and we can have a sound, have a conference call with her, and that gives us time to, uh, reflect on, on this money, because there's several other things in the book, uh, you know, dealing with, uh, revenue and paying employees and stuff, all this money that's sitting there, that I would love, like, rather give that money to the employees, than trying to, you know, if we get down to them, than trying to figure out, because we got all, all these guidelines on putting heat in our system and forth, where if you didn't do it that way, you could do, you could do work at the jail, where I can turn a dollar into three dollars, instead of, it costs us four dollars out of this money that we've got, if we go to this plan out here and use some of this money, and then come, come, uh, it might be, we just pass say, move on, and, and forget about this, and send it back to the federal government, and then do it.
We got, we got five more years to use that money, I don't think it'll be done by now. All right, anybody else have more discussion? Did you adjourn this moment?
I'm going to adjourn.
That's okay. All right, that's good.